Okay, we'll make a start. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for attending the meeting this morning. My name's Abdul Qayyum, councillor for Firth Park and chair of this licensing committee. And before I ask all the colleagues to introduce themselves, I'm just going to ask the Democratic Services to outline the housekeeping arrangements for this morning.
Thank you, Chair. In the event of a fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from the staff and shewers. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Please can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode as to not disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recordings of the proceeding is permitted, however, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend the permission of this recording. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Is there any apologies for absence? Any exclusions of public and press? Any declarations of interest? No? Okay, thank you. Now, can I ask my colleagues to introduce themselves, please? Councillor McGowan.
Hello, I'm councillor McGowan for Burley Ward. Thank you.
Councillor Joe Wattenborough and Tolly.
So.
Morning, Samantha Bond, legal adviser to the subcommittee.
I'm Mitchell Whibley, I'm for Legal Services, but I'm just observing today.
Emma.
Good morning.
Good morning, Emma Rhodes Evans, Licensing Service.
GND Democrat Services Officer.
And the applicants, please. Microphone, please.
My name's Adam Mohammed.
Andrew Forrest, Solicitor, excuse my voice.
Chamberhead in Trading Standards.
And David Lotterbrook, Trading Standards.
Catherine Jarvis, Police Licensing.
Good morning, Julie Hare, Safeguarding.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I'm just going to ask our solicitor to outline the procedure for this morning.
Thank you, Chair. I think we've got a hard copy of papers there for everyone, but we've got extras if you need them. I think we've also had the additional information, which is the witness statement from Trading Standards circulated and the additional stuff from you, which we've printed off and copies have all gone round there. So the licensing officer, who's Emma this morning, will introduce the report. If there are any questions concerning the report, we'll get those raised there. So if there's anything missing or inaccurate, and then we can get that amended for the record. We'll turn first to the applicant for review, so Trading Standards will be asked to detail the review application. Members will have an opportunity for questions. We'll then head to the representatives for the other responsible authorities, so the police and safeguarding will also be asked to detail their representations. Again, members can ask them questions. So once we've done with all the responsible authorities, with the leave of the Chair, you'll be given the opportunity to ask them all questions as well if you want to. We'll then head over to the premises to respond to the review application and any other representations made, both in the report and or really at the hearing here today. Again, questions from members and with the leave of the Chair, any of these guys could also ask questions as well. The licensee will be given the opportunity to sum up, just to leave us with any final thoughts before we take the options from Emma, and then members will go into private session to take legal advice and consider the review application. If you do want to wait around, we can give you that decision a little bit later on today. The decision of the licensing committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made there under. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice, so we can do that in open session as we are now, or in private where we'll ask you guys just to pop next door. We'll pause the live webcast recording, we'll have a discussion and then we'll invite you back in and feedback what that was. And as the Chair said, it is a public hearing this morning that's being live webcast and recorded as well. That's everything, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Sam. Okay, can we have the report then, please?
Thank you, Chair. This report is to consider an application for the review of premises licence for Jordan Thor Food and Wine on Dyche Lane, Sheffield, based on the licensing objectives of preventing crime and disorder and the protection of children from harm. This review was submitted by Sheffield Trading Standards on the 14th of February 2025 due to the premises breaching legislation by supplying illegal vapes and keeping smuggled goods. A copy of the application and supporting documents submitted by Trading Standards is attached at Appendix A of this report, which includes witness statements and a letter sent to the business. The review application details numerous site visits made at the premises and on three separate occasions, there has been a seizure of 1,176 illegal vapes. The council's licensing policy refers to how the licensing authority will deal with the sale of illicit goods under the crime and disorder objective on page 16 and 38 of the policy. During the consultation period of this review, further representations have been received by Sheffield Children's Safeguarding Partnership and the Sheffield Public Health Team, which can be found at Appendix C of this report. The applicant and all interested parties have been invited to this hearing. Since the publication of this report, a further visit has been conducted at the premises by the Trading Standards Team on the 8th of May 2025. A further 100 non-compliant vapes and 17 packs of illegal hand-rolling tobacco were discovered in the premises. A statement and photos have been submitted as evidence by the Trading Standards Team and have been distributed to members and all other parties. There are no specific financial implications arising from this application, however, additional costs may be incurred should the matter go to appeal. The legal position on determining this application is at paragraph six and it is recommended that members carefully consider the application for review along with any other representations made and take such steps as detailed in paragraph 6.2 of the report that the committee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives.
Thank you. Emma, have you had your key with her? Any questions from anyone?
Sorry, Chair, yeah. The previous additional papers, have we got a printout of those? Or have they just come by email? Okay, okay, I'll refer them online.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from anyone? No? Okay, I will now then go over to the responsible authority in case the Trading Standards and ask them to detail their relevant representations, please.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So obviously you briefly heard why we're here today, mainly around the shop, issues around the sale of illegal vapes, which breached the tobacco-related product regulations, part six, and obviously the further offence under the Licensing Act of keeping smuggled goods under section 144. So I'll just briefly outline a bit of background of the sort of legal position around vapes. So part six of the tobacco-related products regulations 2016 govern what can be sold legally. So it details what should be on the label and what should actually be, you know, in the vape itself. Any vape that's on the market should have undergone approval by the MHRA. So there's like an assessment procedure, a conformity procedure, so they will look at that before they can be placed on the market. So that should ensure that they have the correct traceability, so you've got bona fide UK importers, because just because a vape may be illegitimate in another market, somewhere else in the world, it doesn't mean that they're legitimate for sale in the United Kingdom. And that's often the problem we have, that we sort of get a flood of these illegal vapes into the country, they end up on shelves in shops everywhere. And say that they may be perfectly legitimate in another market, but they're not okay to be sold in the UK, which is what we have here. So the part six, or yeah, the bits around the vapes themselves and what should be on the label, so form out of a health warning. Typically, the vapes, the biggest problem with these vapes is that the maximum permitted size of a tank in a disposal is two millilitres, and that sort of equates to, as a guide, it's usually about 600 puffs as a maximum strength, although that's not a sort of legal measure, but the idea is that they're not too strong and there's issues around people getting addicted to them, et cetera. But typically, you know, you may have seen yourselves, you go in these shops where anything up to 15,000 puffs, well, clearly there's no way you could get a 15,000 puff vape out of a two-millilitre tank, it's got to be much bigger to be able to have that level of nicotine in it. So in terms of our specific involvement at this shop, on the 15th of February 2023, Trading Standards officers went into Jordan Thor Food and Wine and seized 468 of these illegal vapes. And the shop would have been warned at the time that they should only be buying vapes from reputable wholesalers. And then moving on, well, exactly a year later, on the 15th of February 2024, the shop was again inspected, a further 466 illegal vapes were seized. So we're talking quite a lot, having done a lot of these vape shops, that's a quite significant number, really. And then later on that year, just before Christmas, 18th of December 2024, the back end of last year, we had a further 242 illegal vapes. On the 9th of January this year, Trading Standards officers, obviously we've been in three times, they'll have been warned not to do it, but again, we keep finding these illegal vapes. So a colleague of mine went in undercover, was able to buy a Skittles flavoured Hyatt E5000 puff vape, which obviously I've explained to you about tank sizes, what's permissible, for £10, which clearly demonstrated that the shop's just not listened to what we've told them before. And I remember this is, there's been three inspections, three lots of seizures, totaling 1,176 illegal vapes, they got over three visits. So test purchase was done, but again, you know, evidence that they're still selling these things. The vapes seized by Trading Standards on each occasion expected to be smuggled or illegally imported, and they are not permitted to be sold in the UK and should not be stocked in wholesale or retail premises, excuse me. We've also had issues, complaints coming in that the shop's been selling vapes to children under the age of 18. So the shop was written to on the 10th of January of this year, explaining that we've had a complaint or complaints, that this is standard procedure, and advising what the issues are and the penalties, et cetera, for selling to underage children. So they'll have been briefed about their obligations under underage selling of vapes. And this was followed up on the 22nd of January, when my colleague Evan Battershaw went in and did a sort of due diligence compliance visit at the shop. So he'll have checked various systems, you know, are they in a good place to be on top of issues around children going in trying to buy vapes? And evidence that he found no evidence of written staff training or a refusals register. Oh no, there was a refusal register, but it had not been used in over a year, and the last recorded entry was December 2023. So obviously that, there is a defence to, if a shop sells to an underage person, they've got a due diligence defence. If they can turn around and prove they've taken all reasonable precautions and taken all due diligence, then they can sort of, you know, they have got a legitimate defence to that. But there's no point in having a refusals register if it's not been filled in in over a year. So moving on to the 8th of May, another visit was carried out. So this was just, what, two, three weeks ago? And this time, as well as illegal vapes, there were 17 packets of hand-rolling illegal tobacco found concealed in the fridge, just to the left of the counter. I think we can argue, I think we all know that the issues around illegal tobacco, I think it's been explained on numerous occasions, but obviously there's no duty paid on these, there's no legitimate health warnings. You know, we know that smoking contributes to potentially 80,000 excess deaths a year, two and a half billion pounds of lost revenue to the government. I think everybody knows the issues around illegal tobacco. But whereas there might be issues around the vapes, where you say, well, not sure, it's a bit technical, the legislation, we're not sure what we should be buying, when you're concealing hand-rolling tobacco in a fridge, there's a clear and deliberate attempt, you know, to sell this stuff and hide it from anyone that might come in and try and look for it. So to that end, we would recommend you fully consider revoking the licence. And I would point out, we've got this catalogue of illegal vapes, advice around underage sales, but I think, given the illicit tobacco situation and the Home Office guidance under the section 182 of the Licensing Act, it lists a number of activities where revocation should be considered in the first instance, and one of those is the sale or storage of smuggled tobacco and alcohol. So, and it suggests, you go on to paragraph 11.28, that was 11.27, you go on to 11.28, and it implies, it suggests that if one of those activities, which the keeping of smuggled tobacco and alcohol is one of them, that revocation should be seriously considered, even in the first instance. So not only have we got 11, over 1,100 vapes being seized from the shop over four inspections, with issues around underage sales and a lack of the due diligence system, we've also got illicit hand-rolling tobacco being concealed behind fresh food products in a refrigerator. So to that end, I'd strongly recommend that you do consider revoking the licence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. We may have some questions, my colleagues may have some questions, and I certainly got some questions, just to make some clarifications. So we'll just go to that question stage now before we move on to the other representations. Just taking you back to the very first point you made about the sale of vapes, their content and size, et cetera, and the acceptability in the UK. Any proprietor who is selling these products, am I correct in saying that they would be expected to know exactly what they are legally allowed to sell? And, you know, with it being the law, ignorance of the law is an excuse that we would expect them, well, would be their responsibility, ensure that they are on the right side of the law in terms of what they can and cannot sell. Am I correct in that?
I would completely agree, Jay, yes. This, as I'm sure you're all aware, the use of disposable vapes has exploded in the last two, three years. And our first visit was, what, February 2023? So we're talking, we were in the early days of when these products became very, very popular, we will have advised verbally, may have given out written advice as well. But we're now, what, three, four years into this, and you're absolutely right to say that ignorance of the law is not an excuse. All traders who sell disposable vapes or any nicotine inhaling products should be 100% completely clear on. There's enough guidance out there, it's not difficult to look online, even to the point where if you go to legitimate wholesalers, you know, they're only going to sell the correct products. You're obviously can't, if you're buying them from the correct, down the correct avenues, you can't go wrong if you like. You know, I'm not saying that's guaranteed, but that should be the way of looking at it. So yeah, I completely, completely agree.
That's fine, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, you know, for the purpose of the meeting, that that is the case. And obviously your further point about, you know, coming out with the reason that it's very technical and didn't understand the technicalities, I mean, that then becomes irrelevant, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you. Okay, just one more point. You said that Trading Standards, as far as I've seen this report and from your representation, made four visits, and at each visit, they found illegal activity or selling of illegal products. Can I just ask, every time you, you know, for the first time, and you issued a warning, and second time you went and, you know, did you refer to the previous warning and what was the response from the proprietors about not listening to that warning?
We, I'm sure we will have done, we'll have said, you know, we've been before, why is this still happening? I don't know, I suspect it's too lucrative and profitable a business selling these disposable vapes, high-strength disposable vapes, to, you know, because you're right, you might go in once and they'd listen to what you said, look, you can't sell these. In an ideal world, you'd go in next time and you wouldn't find anything and the shop wouldn't be, you know, we could drop it off the list and it wouldn't be an issue anymore. So I just think that, yeah, it's too lucrative a business to want to give it up. That's, yeah, that's what I would say.
Okay, thank you. No questions, further questions from me for time being. I'll just offer my colleague, councillor McGowan. Any questions, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm surprised that it's took four times. I'm very surprised that Trading Standards go in four times, I would have thought it'd been here after twice. I just wondered, is that normal? Is, you know, do you have, is this a regular, is this what normal practice is, that you give warning and then a warning and then a warning? It seems really serious to me, this, and that I'm just trying to get over why it's four times and not after one or two.
We only have a very small team and we have to cover the whole city. And I'm sure you're well aware, probably if you go into any shop, there's just so many vaping premises these days. It's not just specialist vape shops, every convenience store is potentially selling vapes and a lot are selling illegal vapes. So it's, yeah, it's simply a case of the resources that we have and making best use of those resources, really.
So when you find the vapes, do you question where they've gotten from? Does that information then go through to the police? It might be something that you can come in on later, but it was just, what happens then in the process? You find them, you confiscate them, but I'm trying to get, where does, how do we get to the source of who's selling them and try and close that down? And I was just wondering what happened.
We do try and ascertain information whenever we do a seizure, but sometimes the owner, he might not be on the premises. I mean, I'm sure you'll hear later about, he may say where these vapes are coming from. What we're, I don't know. What we're hearing is that a lot of these vapes are coming from Manchester, from the Cheetham Hill area of Manchester. And I am probably a bit fed up of having the same conversation with shop. And I'll say, well, there's plenty of cash and carries wholesalers in Sheffield that you could go to, where you could get, why don't you, oh no, I'll go and get them from Manchester or whatever, because unfortunately, there is probably a consumer demand for these high-strength vapes, and that's what the public wants to buy. So I can't say it's the same in every case, but generally, that's the problem we've got, where a lot of them are coming, they are coming from over there.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
Yeah.
You okay? No questions?
No, no.
Sam?
Thank you. Just obviously, as you've said, you visit a lot of premises across the city and I imagine quite frequently. How unusual is it to have to go three, four visits and to have a positive seizure in this repeated activity on that sort of scale? Or do you sort of find, do you speak to the premises once or twice and it doesn't happen again? How common is it for this frequency to occur?
It's fairly common, but I think it's fair to say, in this case, with this particular shop, it's the quantities we're finding, which has probably, you know, contributed to why we're here today. We're not just going in and finding 10 or 20 of them, there's over the four visits, there's over, well over 1,000. And that is a lot, I mean, it's a big shop, it sells a lot of stuff, including a lot of these illegal vapes.
Thank you. I was just going to ask if that's a typical sort of level of seizure or?
I'd say it was higher, certainly higher, on the high end, yeah.
And usually where you find illegal vapes, do you also find problems with the illicit tobacco as well typically? Do you find there's a link?
Not in every case, but often we do, yeah. And obviously, we have here as well with the hand-rolling tobacco being hidden in the fridge.
Thank you. Were there investigations as to a bigger concealment on the premises with the illicit tobacco? Or was it the case it was found and seized from the fridge and we've come to this point now already?
We don't have any evidence of any bigger concealment, no.
Okay, that's fine, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So that's the end of questions from us. I'm going to give the applicants an opportunity to ask any questions, if you have any question. But please do not start responding to the points at this stage, you'll get an opportunity to do that afterwards. But if you want to ask any specific questions, you're welcome to do so.
Yes, Chair, thank you. Just a question, in terms of, I think it's already been brought up, when you go in and you seize the products, what following advice do you give to the retailer? You know, in terms of how to make sure things are right?
We do give, you know, we will have, in the early days, we were sort of routinely handing out guidance, but as I mentioned to the Chair earlier, you know, we are going back to 2023, this is not a new piece of legislation. And we do like to hammer on the point of going to legitimate wholesalers, sorry, getting invoices, and they should be able to, if you go into the right places, it's not guaranteed, but you should have more of a chance of getting the right product. But they certainly will have been advised, certainly verbally, and I suspect guidance will have been handed out in the early days. But third, fourth time up, you're not going to be giving the continued.
There will have been or they were, there will have been or they were advice, which is it?
Well, even if they weren't advising right, and they will have been advised verbally, because quite often, quite often, shops like this one will also sell legitimate vapes. So you can pick one off the shelf, and I've done it many a time, this is what you're looking for, this is an example of a legitimate vape. You might typically pick up a 600 puff health bar, everything's MHRA approved, you know, this is quite happy to do, spend five, 10 minutes with them, talking through it, and this is what we often do, we'll take a legitimate product and say, this is a good example of what you should be buying.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Chair. Could I ask another question, please? In terms of the visit in May this year, as it was pointed out, there wasn't a big haul, it was 17 packs, as I understand it.
15, was it?
It was actually 15 from the seizure notice, not 17. But anyway, that's just, you know, splitting hairs. But did you ask the reason why they were there when you actually seized them?
Well, no, I mean, you weren't there, we couldn't ask yourself, it was just a chopper system working at the time, but I don't really see how that's relevant, why we would ask the reason why they're hiding illegal packs of hand-rolling tobacco in a fridge, I don't...
So the answer is no?
Well, no, no, I'm just interested why that's relevant, really.
It is relevant. I'm just asking, did you ask?
We haven't done, no.
Okay, thanks.
Okay?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Right then, thank you, that's the responsible authority done. We'll go over to the other end. Right then, thank you, that's the responsible authority done, we'll go over to the other interesting parties, interested parties rather, they're all interesting. So who is it next, is it, either, yeah, let's go with you the first.
Thank you Chair. Well, the Safeguarding Children Partnership made a representation to highlight its concerns regarding the management culture at the premises. So the chronologies that you'll hear from all of the three responsible authorities today, evidence that despite attempting to work in the spirit of partnership with the licence holder, which is something we always do, we try to educate and support in the first instance, which is probably why it takes some time so long to arrive at this point, we've done that and the premises are still continue to operate irresponsibly, it's therefore not a safe environment for children and young people, so that's the concern that the Safeguarding Partnership has. General safeguarding contact began back in August 2022 and that wasn't target, that wasn't specifically targeted at that premises, it was targeted at that locality. So in the area, the police had concerns that were made known to safeguarding about antisocial behaviour with young people, the possibility of underage sales in general in the location. So we did the multi-agency Operation Scorpion, we all went out to visit most, the majority of premises to just sort of scope what standards were in place and to see if there were any gaps that we needed to address, because we thought that could be contributing to the issues in the locality at the time. So from that visit, we became aware of gaps in practice, that due diligence wasn't up to standard around preventing underage sales, so they, you know, they didn't have the right posters, they didn't have the refusal logs, they'd not done the training, they weren't compliant with some of the licence conditions, including the one that requires the DPS to be a lead for safeguarding. So we tried to address that, we gave advice, offered free training to Mr Mohammed, who is the DPS as well as the licence holder, and tried to give our full support. The training is free of charge and we offered it to Mr Mohammed, Mr Hamer, who is the general manager, and all of the shop staff. So that was in August 22, 2022. The training is multi-agency, it has content from Trading Standards, from the police and from safeguarding, so we don't expect them to do different types of training, we bring it all together, so they're getting consistent messages and they're getting, getting that support. It's designed to support operators with their responsibility, so that they fully understand how age restricted goods can put children at risk of things like intoxication, dangerous activity, antisocial behaviour and risks of being groomed into criminal activity. So it does include, you know, content around gang related activity, child exploitation, the risk that children can get involved in drug running or moving, shifting illegal products around, because there were some of the concerns in that area at that time. Unfortunately, Mr Mohammed did not attend the training in October 2022. So we, he didn't have the benefit of that information despite being offered and despite it being free of charge. Some months later, I revisited the shop on the 6th of February to monitor progress and to discuss a complaint about underage sales that had allegedly taken place at this shop and another shop, so we'd had some information. Because we needed to revisit anyway, we, we went back to the premises, I think it was a, some, from, follow up from Operation Scorpion, so we did some follow up visits and we went to this premises, so now we were particularly becoming concerned about the premises and non-compliance. Mr Mohammed wasn't present on the 6th of February, but Mr Hamer, who's the general manager, was. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to evidence that anyone had attended any safeguarding training or that a risk assessment was in place. So I discussed my concerns, that neither Mr Mohammed nor Mr Hamer had attended any safeguarding awareness training and just to be clear, that the licence condition for states that the DPS to be a lead safeguarder for child issues. When this condition is agreed with licensees, the Safeguarding Partnership always routinely issues a description of what that means, because we're clear what it means, so there's a, there's a description that goes at the point of negotiating the conditions, we will give out that description of what that role means, what it entails, and we also make an offer of training. So we've for 20 years provided a description of the role routinely and we've offered free training to support people in that role. So it would be clear what, what Mr Mohammed was being signed up to, if you like, and the support that was available. I think it's indicative of the management culture that some six months after training had been offered, the DPS had declined to attend, he'd not taken time, so this is in February, to do a safeguarding risk assessment to ensure a safe environment for children. I would emphasise that the condition for a safeguarding lead, it's not standard practice, it's not something we, you know, ask every shop that sells age restricted goods to, to do, because often it's not necessary, but if, if a location is in a hotspot or there's been a risk identified, so it might be near schools for example, or an area where, where there are other concerns, social concerns, that's where we would escalate the conditions and ask for that condition. I just want to be clear about why that condition is on that licence, because it's a shop. The premises is located in a busy community shopping centre, it's popular with teenagers who frequent the shop unaccompanied and we rely as a partnership, Safeguarding Partnership, on compliance with the licence conditions in order to address any unusual risks due to the location. So due to ongoing concerns about non-compliance, a multi-action, agency action plan was served on the 16th of February, including, and this is 2023, that included a requirement to attend the safeguarding training and do a risk assessment. So some, seven months later, we did achieve compliance, so within, within just under a year, we'd managed to get Mr Mohammed to come to the table, if you like, and start to consider the seriousness of, of compliance. So he attended the training on the 17th of July 2023, having been asked to attend it back in August 2022. We didn't have any further concerns about the premises until we were informed of the concerns raised by Trading Standards, that illegal activities taking place at the shop. So on the 27th of February, I visited the premises again and that was to just establish if safeguarding policies and procedures were being complied with, and mostly they were. There were a couple of issues that still weren't being complied with, we couldn't, we couldn't have sight of, staff training records, the current safeguarding risk assessment had disappeared. So I wrote to Mr Mohammed, just for some reassurance, you know, I've visited, there are a couple of gaps that need addressing, one of your staff hasn't attended the training. Unfortunately, I didn't receive a reply to that email and that's, that's symptomatic of, of how relations with the authorities have been, I think. So we're concerned as a safeguarding partnership that the management culture at the premises is resistant to compliance. As my colleague earlier said, we don't have an abundance of resources, there are a lot of premises, licensed premises in Sheffield, so we expect licensees to take their responsibilities seriously. As I've said, the safeguard interventions and advice that were issued in August 2022 weren't given any regard until September 2023. And more concerningly, despite the licence holder having complied now, so he's attended the training, the safeguarding awareness training, completed the knowledge test successfully, done a safeguarding risk assessment, it's very disappointing to find that children are still being allowed to access an area where high risk products are on sale, illegal activity is taking place and the DPS lead safeguarder doesn't seem to recognise the risk between age restricted products, unregulated illegal products and the risk to children. So the information's been there, the knowledge test has been passed, as far as I'm concerned, the licence holder is fully informed of risk and yet children are still being allowed to access that environment, which is a concern for the Safeguarding Partnership. In my experience, which is over 20 years now in Sheffield, the majority of operators who sell age restricted products do so responsibly, they understand the regulations, they make, they take time to research their responsibilities, they're compliant and, and they take their responsibilities seriously, but unfortunately, that's not the case today. In light of those concerns, the Safeguarding Partnership urges the licensing subcommittee to take positive action to address the concerns about management at the premises. Thanks Chair.
Thanks Julie for that very comprehensive representation. Just one question from you, just for clarification, then I'll pass to my colleagues. When you say that in spite of all the training and the knowledge test that we pass etcetera, you're disappointed that children were still being allowed access to, you know, to the environment, can you just expand on that? What do you mean by access for children?
So it's a shop and it's an environment where we've got products that aren't being responsibly managed or sold. So if children are going into that shop, which they do, they regularly go in, it's a surprise because of the content of the training, which talks about how children are targeted at licensed premises, you know, it, it often shops at places where children and young people congregate, they hang around there depending on what's available, you know, whether it's energy drinks or anal nitrate, whatever's on sale, children, young teenagers particularly, will start to gather round. Sometimes that starts to attract criminals who are interested in targeting children and young people out. That's a risk, I'm not saying that's happened, but it's a risk and it's a risk that we talk about in the safeguarding multi-agency training, because what we're trying to do is prevent that, we're trying to be proactive. So for that to, for evidence of that kind of activity to be taking place and there not to be any change in practice, you know, for example, children being accompanied by an adult, a responsible adult, or children only being allowed in at certain times, it's, it hasn't been recognised or managed, that's, I hope that clarifies Chair.
That's fine, thank you, thanks for that. Okay, go on to my colleagues, Councillor Norton, for questions.
Excuse me, just a quick one, is the training online or face to face?
So it was online in 2022 to 2023 and then last year we converted it to, sorry, it was, yeah, it was online, so accessible through Zoom. So even in 2022, 23, licensees didn't have to go anywhere or park or physically be away from the shop, they accessed it through their computers and we, we did that to make it more accessible. We then shifted it to an online 24/7 format, which it is now.
So can I just ask, is it, so can you see the person online or is it, I'm just trying to work out whether somebody else can do the training on their behalf, because if you say it's 24/7, how do you know it's the licensee that's doing it?
So at the point of registration, they have to sign a declaration, so previous to it being online 24/7, which is, which is the time, it would be, there was an ID process. So the learner would have to go face to face, show their ID, send in a copy, the Safeguarding Partnership would verify it and then they would be allowed into the training. Thank you councillor.
Okay, thank you. Right, okay, and again, to the applicant, any questions please? No. Right, okay, go on to the next one.
Morning, so I don't want to go through too much of what Julie has already said, because we, all those visits that we did was all joint visits, so I, I agree wholly with, with her analysis of, of our time with Adam and visiting the premise. The things that I can expand on, so what was disappointing from, from our perspective was that he didn't take the verbal advice and the email advice that we gave on the first visit and we, we go back six months later and nothing had been done or changed in his style of operation, he hadn't attended the training. So that was quite concerning that he wasn't engaging. As, as Julie said, we did six visits in total, all followed up with emails to confirm those visits and what was said. So at each visit, he's had verbal advice from the council licensing, myself, Julie, I think two occasions, we had police officers that also gave some advice around the issues that are happening in the area, so Ops Scorpion is, was an area wide, it was the whole low edges, Jordan Thorpe and Baitmore areas that, that were covered under that, that operation and that was because, and, and it is still the case now, that we have a lot of organised crime gangs operating out of the area for drugs and illicit products like the cigarettes and the vapes and we have a lot of issues in the local schools, in the comprehensive schools as well as the primary schools, with children selling illicit products to their classmates and some of these illicit products also containing elements of cannabis as well. So we have had those issues. So the, the local policing team, during these operations, when we visited all these licence premises, were also giving advice out with regards, we were obviously on our first visit in the August, Trading Standards were with us, some colleagues, and obviously some more illicit products were found in, in that visit in the August of 2022 and again, we were all present at that and advice was given verbally. From our side of things, the, the advice that we have given as a joint, as the council, police and safeguarders all given on an email that I sent out to the premise on behalf of all three of us, Julie did follow up with her emails as well, with the code of conduct and the safeguarding coordinator role profiles. So they have been given everything at every opportunity. It was great though, that after all of those visits and all of those emails, to then go to the premise and find that everything was finally compliant and due diligence to promote the licence's objectives were being done and that gave some reassurance. So we didn't feel that to do any follow up checks after that, to, to go back in three, six months' time. So the next time that we've had any kind of dealings with the premise was when Trading Standards then advised us that there'd been some further illicit products sold, which again was very disappointing to find that that had gone back to how it was from 2022. I did email Mr Mohammed, just to ask him to forward on, I, I wanted to check that he was, he'd carried on with his due diligence from when we signed them off the action plan. So I did ask for, let me just have a look, just bear with me a minute, just find it on my list. So this was on the 15th of February, so following receiving the review application, I attempted to contact Adam via email to check, he was still employing his due diligence practices and asked him to, I sent him a copy of the action plan that we'd had him on previously, so he had all of the previous information, he'd failed to respond. In my letter, I did ask if he could produce details of who he employs at the shop and their accompanying staff training records, just to check if he'd had a change of staff in and whether he was carrying on with doing the staff training. We all recommended that he does at least yearly his, his staff training and this is obviously what, what we've advised previously and sometimes you may want to do that earlier than a year, but at least a minimum of a year. So I wanted to check his records to see whether he kept up on top of everything. The safeguarding training certificate for the, for his staff, because I, I believe we only had him and Hammer that had completed it, but he does employ other staff. The safeguarding risk assessment for the premise to see whether he's looked at that a year on and revised it and made any amendments or is it still the same, and photos of the last four pages of his refusal register. I also referred to the discharge letter that I'd sent him with regards to the action plan. the action plan, where we do say, you know, thank you for all your hard work, for, um, working with us to improve practices at your shop. Um, please remember to keep up on the due diligence and there may be checks further in the future. And it does state in that letter as well, um, that, you know, failure to uphold your due diligence and, and the licence conditions could result in a review of the licence. So we're trying to advise them to keep on with the hard work. The hardest bit is doing it and then once you've got it done, it's easy just to keep on top. But sometimes they let practices slip. I never got a response to that email. Um, so, when I wrote my, um, representation, uh, there was no response and I've still not received a, a response. So again, very disappointing that he's aware he's got a review of his licence, um, a responsible authority is asking for information and he's not provided it. Um, just then want to go further on to, um, within my representation, I, um, added an article that was written by a DC Jonathan Keenan, uh, from the Met Police. And it was quite, it, it sort of highlighted everything that I would want to say, really, in terms of organised crime groups, um, the, the, the illegal vapes and tobacco goes hand in hand with organised crime, drug dealing and money laundering. And worrying trends at the moment are showing significant numbers of children are becoming addicted to nicotine with vape addiction leading the children into criminal worlds. So illegal vapes, um, crime, the crime groups often use vape addiction to lure children into the county lines and drug, uh, operations. That is something that is actively being, uh, pursued by the local police in, in that area at the moment. It's a current thing that's still ongoing, um, with regards to county lines, uh, and, and youths involved in, in those drug gangs. Illegal vapes are often given to the children by the gangs, uh, and the drug dealers. And then they're being sold in the schools, um, and playgrounds by children that are exploited as, and they're called vape mules. So for ha- having a shop that's also selling illicit products, that's potentially putting illicit products into the hands of those children in the area. So I'm not saying that their children are going in and buying them themselves, but other people involved in the gangs in those areas could potentially be buying these illicit vapes and giving them to the children to then sell on and getting them addicted to it. We don't know what's in them. I know Public Health have put their report in with regards to, um, you know, we have got one or two cases where we've had children wandering around the senior schools like zombies because there's been something in, in the vapes that's not just nicotine. So it is a concern that you've got retailers, um, providing those into the community, um, for, for which they serve. Uh, uh, and, you know, like we've already said, you know, Mr Mohammed has had, um, a lot of engagement from all agencies, so four agencies in total, plus local policing team. And it's actually his due diligence to ensure that if he wants to sell certain products in his shop, he knows the rules and regulations around how to sell those and where to buy the products and, and what the legislation is. Although he's been, you know, he has been provided all of that verbally. I'm not sure exactly whether he was given paperwork by Trading Standards, but I can confirm that I was present during verbal advice, uh, on a number of occasions. So, you know, to be caught again, uh, and even after he's been caught in the January, for them to go back in, in May and find more illicit products is, is very concerning. Whether Mr Mohammed is in control of that premise or not, um, and whether he's fully aware of what's happening in his shop, I know he has multiple shops, um, but it is a concern. So I would ask the, uh, committee, as Julie has asked, um, to help safeguard uh, the community around this premise with, with regards to Mr Mohammed and his operations at that premise. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, again, uh, any questions, Councillor McGowan?
Yeah, just one quick one. The one that I asked Trading Standards was about the follow-up when you find out that there's illegal, uh, goods. Is there any investigation that takes place of the source of it? I'm just keen to get to the source and start.
Unfortunately, I can't answer that because I'm, um, a civilian, I'm a licensing officer and I only deal with, um, alcohol. Um, so anything, Trading Standards do, uh, regularly deal with the local policing teams in an area to, to create cases against, um, premises or to find the source of, of the products. But I'm not involved in that and I, I don't get told about that, so I'm sorry, I can't help. I'm sure, I'm sure there are those things happening in the background.
Okay, Councillor, any questions? Sam? Uh, can I make, any questions?
No Chair, I haven't got any questions, but I wondered if the heating could be turned a little bit, I'm freezing sitting here. I've got a draught on the back of my neck, I'll end up with a stiff neck. I just wondered if that was possible Chair. It might be the window then.
Do you support with, um, low temperature in this, in this hall I'm afraid, so?
It's the draught, it's actually a draught coming onto my neck, that's all. Thank you, thanks Chair, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, in that case then it is no questions from anyone else. Uh, can I then come out yourself and ask you to detail your application then please? Or your, uh, response to the representations, thank you.
Thanks Chair. So I just want, want to start by saying that the, and excuse my voice, I've got a bit of still throat. Um, the Licensing Act is a permissive piece of legislation. And a key factor of the licensing regime is that it's remedial in nature and not punitive. And therefore your job here today isn't to punish, that's a matter for the courts. Your job is to decide what were the causes of concern and what measures have been taken, if any, um, which are reasonable proportionate and able to remedy the issues, um, if they've not been remedied to date. You know there are various options open to you and your determination as to what should happen today, but a situation which is capable of being remedied, sorry, I miss my voice, has, does not call for a licence to be revoked. It calls for education, guidance and training. Excuse me. So although the review has been investigated by Trading Standards, I wish to address the concerns of the police in the first instance. It is in fact that there have been a lot of interventions here, uh, more than one occasion. But the police have confirmed that on their last visit, my client was compliant. And they signed off the action plan, which unfortunately I haven't seen, although, um, sorry, I've forgotten your name. Catherine did send to me earlier, um, in the room outside, but I've not been able to open my email, so, but I've got a gist of, of what it was about, but I haven't seen it, so I can't actually comment on it. Um, so, it, in terms of citing breaches of conditions, um, in the police rep on a number of visits, many of the conditions on the licence are not relevant to the Licensing Act. And they shouldn't, they can't really be considered here. And if, if you look at the actual licence on page, it's not got page number on this one. Bear with me. It starts on, it's not numbered on, just one second. Oh yeah, it starts on page thirty-one, you can't see the numbers because of the, um, barcode. So it's page thirty-five, um, of the bundle, of the conditions that are on the licence at the moment. And they don't really do anything to assist anyone. Um, so, there shall be CCTV inside and outside to police requirements. And, and recordings will, sorry, and recordings will be available to the police. So, what does that mean exactly? There shall be CCTV inside and out, okay? And recordings will be available, available to the police, when, how, on request, within forty-eight hours, there's no, I mean, that is a valid condition. Condition two, challenge twenty-one scheme will be adopted. Well, it's challenge twenty-five now. So you can see that these are old conditions that really don't have a lot of relevance here. The DPS to be a member of Licence Watch, well, the police have confirmed there isn't a Licence Watch in the area, so that's an irrelevant condition. Um, DPS to, to be lead safeguarder for child issues, that is a condition on the licence. However, that wouldn't be a condition on a, on a new licence that was applied for now. Um, and then it goes on about floor surfaces and shelving and display units and, and things like that and, it's just, there should be no adult entertainment services. That's not for an off-licence, for, for a convenience store. Many of these conditions are not even relevant. And what this licence needs is proper conditions so that they are enforceable. Um, I'm not saying that the conditions that are on the licence at the moment aren't important to licensing. Um, simply they're not a consideration under the Licensing Act. Um, they really aren't relevant to the premises licence under the Licensing Act. So it's questionable whether there were any licence breaches as such. So, again, I've mentioned the action plan, unfortunately I've not been able to access it, um, so I can't really, I can't really add any further comments on that. That said, Trading Standards brought the application for review and proposed, proposed either conditions or revocation. And the conditions that Trading Standards put forward are sensible conditions. Um, but to go a little stage further, we have offered, um, the conditions which you may, you should have seen this morning. And apologies for the late, um, arrival of the information, which was sent last night, but I, I was working over the bank holiday, so you wouldn't have seen it yesterday, if you know what I mean. So it was sent over yesterday for you to have a look at. So you'll see there's a number of conditions which are robust conditions. Now those conditions, if they were added to the licence, would assist in, it would assist in compliance. Do you, do you have copies of them? Thank you. Do you have a copy Chair? Oh, thank you. Um, so those conditions would, would assist in compliance. And the conditions that were, um, proposed by Trading Standards, I believe, would assist in compliance and holding up the licensing objectives. Um, but as I've already stated, this is a permissive piece of legislation and does allow for remedial action. You'll notice also that there's a vape, um, and alcohol policy, which basically says that you have to input where you get the stock from, who you buy it from, what's the name, what's the company etcetera, on that vape policy. That vape policy would then become a condition on the licence where this allowed to continue. So if that was breached, then that would be a breach of condition. Um, it is apparent, as I say, there have been a number of interventions. But, to my knowledge and given the answers today, I do not believe that advice has been given in terms of leaflets, how do you look for the legality of the vapes? Point them in the, uh, in the direction of, uh, education on the subject. Um, I do think it's education and advice, it's not about a deliberate flouting of the law, it's a lack of understanding and something that is capable of being put right. It's not sufficient to just seize the vapes and lead a retailer non-the-wiser. So we're taking these away, but there's no further advice given, there's no, well, this is what you need to do and this is how you can do it and this is how you can check. Um, Trading Standards did propose that, that if the committee are minded to allow the premises licence holder to retain the licence, then the conditions that they've put forward at page twenty in the bundle, um, these are agreed by my client. Um, it's important to note that when revocation is suggested, that the premises licence only permits a set of alcohol. And revoking the premises licence will not deal with the issue, the issues before you, which are the vapes. The non-U K compliant vapes and tobacco products. If the premises licence is revoked, the alcohol, which is not the source of the issues before you, will have to be removed, but the other products can still be sold. So it makes no sense to revoke the licence. What does make sense is to put conditions on which address the issues that are here today before you. So as I've said, the vape, alcohol, tobacco policy will ensure that the vapes can only be purchased from a reputable retailer. All the details of which must be recorded on, on the policy itself. And if, if breached, it would be a condition breach. In terms of the illegal vapes seized from the premises, I don't dispute this, uh, I represent many clients in this situation. In fact, it's sometimes difficult for the officers to even tell at first glance, um, whether a vape is legal or whether it isn't. Sometimes the information's contained within, within the pack on the leaflet. Each brand needs to be checked and it'd be quite, quite difficult for a layperson to ascertain the legality. Some mistakes can be made. The problem is that, obviously with the Licensing Act, the, the training was all about alcohol sales. Pretty much all about alcohol sales and there isn't really, um, much out there for training on vape sales and what you should look out for. Um, training's never really been offered to retailers on the legality of vapes. You know, training courses like personal licence courses for the alcohol and level-two courses for the alcohol. It's not really been offered in terms of vapes. The vapes have come out, the retailers have bought them and they've sold them. I'm instructed that my client purchased the vapes from a cash-and-carry type establishment known, known as Golden Goods, who sell a manner of products. And he had no idea that they were not legal in this country. The wholesaler sells all types of vapes, but it's now clear that not all of them are legal. It's not sufficient to say that the vape should not be in excess of six hundred puffs, as this theory isn't actually correct. It's, it's, it's a guide, but it's not correct. And it, like I say, it's not just a matter of examining the boxes, it's, sometimes the information's contained on the leaflets within. That said, it's perfectly acceptable that they've been seized. But they do need to be checked by experts, um, on many occasions to, to confirm their illegality. So having access to such information, one would expect this could be passed on to the retailer when seizing the vapes, particularly where there's been interventions. The question was asked, have you given warnings? And it's, well, probably, we would have. There's no, yes, we definitely did give a warning, yes, we gave them this advice. And like I said, the training, the training may well be out there now, coming into, in, you know, into fruition now, but it never was. Um, but it's only recent, I'm told by Trading Standards this morning that there is some training. So my client would be more than willing to access that training if they could give it to him. But they haven't so far. So you may be aware that the law on the sale of disposable, single-use vapes is changing and in this country, from the thirty-first of May twenty-five, you can no longer sell disposable, single-use vapes. So any disposable, single-use vapes. So if it, if it's not sort of refillable, rechargeable, then they can't be sold. Hopefully this, this will help retailers tremendously. Um, my client himself has no prior criminal record. Um, he's genuinely upset about what's happened and wishes to apologise for his mistakes. He is now buying from a reputable wholesaler, um, I think it's Nisa Cash and Carry and Buckers and places like that. Um, the policy provided will ensure that this will continue as a condition on the licence, should, should you be minded to allow him to continue operating the licence. As I've said, the licence only covers the alcohol, so taking it away isn't going to solve the problem. Um, the final visit on the eighth of May is disappointing, uh, which revealed some vapes, which my client thought were okay because they didn't contain nicotine. Again, it's training and, and advice. He believed because they were nicotine-free, that they were not classed as illegal. This brings me back to the, the knowledge and where is it and why isn't it given, why isn't it passed over to retailers? Yes, it's their responsibility, it is their responsibility, but the help, each time the authorities go in, it would be good to point them in the right direction. Um, I'm not, you know, sort of pulling the authorities down here, but I'm just saying, from my client's perspective, he probably needed help. Um, the tobacco that's been referred to was, was fifteen pouches. Um, and it was for personal use and I'm told it was in the fridge. And I'm told it was in the fridge because it was very dry. It wasn't hidden, it was in the fridge. Another thing you need to know, that all these vapes weren't hidden, they weren't, they weren't hidden from sight. So they were all on display. So one would expect them, you know, my client to think, well, they are legal, they're on display, they're there for sale. I did advise my client though that tobacco should not have been kept on the premises. He knows he's made mistakes, he's been naive. And he instructed me to help him. And that's when I drafted the conditions and the vape policy. And also I'm putting together, you've seen, a sample of training document. So his due diligence will be up to spec, but that's just a kind of a sample of it. I've given him the MSRA leaflets to check the validity of vapes. But like I said, the law's changed and as from the thirty first of May, none of these single-use disposable vapes can be sold anyway. The premises are now compliant, I'm told, and there won't be any further problems. As I've already said, I think it's important that, that the licence is about the alcohol. If you put conditions on to the licence regarding the vapes, this is the way to deal with the problem, in my opinion. Both the licence holder and his staff members will be going, will, will be undergoing further training as well. And my client does understand the authority's concerns. And he, he does, he does apologise for not being more proactive in, in responding to things. He does take responsibility as a premises licence holder and, and wants to apologise for not being fully compliant. But just ask, can they help him and can they give him guidance going forward? I'm going to help him with that as well from now on. The policies and procedures that are in place now, I believe, are the only way to deal with this because, as I say, revoking the licence just deals with alcohol. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Again, I'm going to open to questions. Just a couple of questions for myself initially. Again, I mean, I put this question to the Trading Standards and I'm going to put the same question to you. I think you alluded to it already in your, towards the, you know, latter end of your representation. Am I correct in saying that the responsibility lies with the proprietor in determining what is legal or illegal or they're selling on their premises? You know, and, you know, is it not the case that ignorance of the law is no excuse? Thank you.
Totally agree, Chair, but what I would say is that in terms of alcohol sales, there is training available. And licences are trained on that. Training isn't available for this.
Thank you. Secondly, again, you, you talked at length about training, guidance, education, et cetera, for the, you know, for the proprietor. We heard quite extensive representation from the agencies this morning that training, guidance, education, you know, has been offered and offered repeatedly. And in fact, the, the training that Julie described was quite comprehensive, which contained elements of not just the safeguarding, you know, stuff as well from Trading Standards, et cetera. But there was a reluctance on, to, on Mr Muhammad's power to take up any training. And also the, the, you know, the representation from the other interested party, the police service, have also said that there was a lack of engagement from the proprietor. So yes, we've seen now that there's some, you know, policies that have been put, put together. And, you know, you, you've heard what you've said. But given the record of disengagement of this proprietor with the agencies, I'm just wondering, you know, how can you be, how can we be convinced or kind of how can we be persuaded that, you know, engagement will now start? Having, I mean, there was, I just, just to make the point that, you know, these, the sale of these illegal products, potentially to young children as well, has an impact, you know, a very detrimental impact on, on the local community and particularly on the young children, which we as an authority and the other authorities are very concerned about. So, I mean, it seemed that there was total disregard for any potential impact. And I'm, I'm just wanting to be persuaded that that's going to change and how that will change.
I think I, I think I understand what you're asking. Yeah, you mentioned about children. There's been no evidence of underage sales of these products whatsoever, no evidence. I, I understand the engagement, I do understand the engagement, but now I'm involved, there will be engagement, I, I can guarantee it. My client actually drove down to my office, which is in Morecambe. We sat there for about two hours and I explained the importance of engaging with the authorities. And I think the fact that there's no conditions on here doesn't help. If there were conditions and I said, you have to comply with these, you know, it would make sense to take the licence away if there was a condition on there regarding the vapes. But at the moment, taking the licence away isn't, isn't going to actually help the situation that we're in here. I do believe that, that legislation is changing and there is going to be, like, similar as personal licence holders, there's going to be something for people selling vapes and cigarettes, which I think is important, you know, a similar sort of requirement. Have to have a licence to do that. At the moment, they can open a shop and just sell them. The alcohol's, you know, additional, so the alcohol is the premises licence. But I think, I, you know, I've sat down with him and I've said, I'm going to do this and I'm going to put this policy together and you will engage with me. I, I, I don't mess around, I think my client will agree with that.
Okay, thank you, consultant.
Thank you. So going back a few moments, you said that you and your client was no longer buying from Golden Goods and, and is now going to, you mentioned to other, other wholesalers. Can I just ask one, when that change was made, when that decision was? When, when's the last time you bought from Golden Goods?
I stopped since, back to, say, month before they seized my last purchase.
So December?
That is back to two, nearly two months ago, yeah?
So.
It's going over a month.
Yeah, okay, okay. So a month before, so, so the stuff that was seized in the last purchase was, was from then, but you still had?
That's what we had, yes.
Yeah, I see, okay, okay. Was it an accident then or was it deliberate each time that you were selling illegal vapes?
It was, what we can say, I have no information, the product being taken and there is not any advice to me what to do with it, why they take it, not what amount they take. There is not any information left behind when they left. They took the product and they walk out. There is no any, any information is for me what to do next.
And were you curious at all as to?
Obviously, I am.
And, and mortified, were you mortified at the prospect of you've done something illegal?
Because I had a.
Were you? I don't think you said, sorry, were you upset?
I am, I am, of course I am.
And this is all the first time that, that these vapes were seized. So, so I, I struggle to see how it happened a second time. If, if the first time you were mortified, you were upset and you hadn't intended to do it, how did it all happen a second time?
Can I just help with that? I don't think we've been told what the products were, they could have been different products, we haven't been told what they are.
But the supplier, you, you kept from, from, because the first instance is like twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. You, you, did you, did you go back to the same supplier that you got the first seized items from and say?
No.
And by, you went to a different supplier?
No, no, to a different supplier because that was legal at the time.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then every time something was seized, did you then say, okay, I'm going to go to a different supplier, every time?
There is plenty of suppliers, but I buy from Cash and Carry. Obviously, I believe them, it should be genuine, no, no fault in the, the product.
And when, and when a, when a cash and carry sells you something that is illegal to sell in your shop, do you go back and say, why did you sell me this? I want my money back?
I do, yes.
And what did they say?
Obviously, still I'm waiting for the invoice to come for the last time they seized it.
You waited for the, right, okay. Perhaps your solicitor could help you with that, have you, have you been engaged to help with?
I'm going to be helping with it all going forward.
Okay, so you've shown, you've circulated this, and so do, do you, do you, do you go to the cash and carry or do they deliver?
I go to the cash and carry and they deliver as well.
And they deliver as well? Because you've got, you, you've offered this policy, this alcohol tobacco vape product, policy counter products. And it talks a lot about instructing your staff not to receive deliveries.
Correct, yeah.
Yes. So, so yeah, so, so things get, I mean, once, I, I, I struggle to see how something gets delivered if you haven't deliberately chosen to buy it in the first place. How is your, your staff's responsibility more than yours?
Because some product is, it's, it's not dependent of what cost them, say, what H M R C say, five and a six hundred puff. There is a plenty cigarette, we don't know, they're all legal as well. They, now you can buy fifty thousand puff and it's all legal and genuine, it's no problem. So that we, we keep buying it and we think it's, it's all legal. And they're taking it, we do, of course, we get upset and we don't understand why they even take it.
You, sorry, you can buy a fifty thousand puff product with a two-mill tank?
Yeah, it's legal.
How do you get fifty thousand out of a two-mill tank?
They should be aware of that as well because it's coming parts separately. So it's ten mill in each pack and it's all coming separate, they connect them together, the customers take them.
So that's refillable then, refillable?
It's not refillable, but it's a pods point onto, on top of the.
Right, well, I'm, I'm baffled, I don't know, can I ask Trading Standards to come in and clarify this? Is that, would that be okay at this point? Because I'm, I'm slightly baffled, is that right?
It's fair to say that the manufacturers are trying to, have been, well, obviously the next week, all these disposable ones are going to be banned anyway. But yes, there are certain circumstances where there's different sort of pod systems and certain manufacturers do try and navigate their way around the legislation by bringing these pod systems. If you've got a pod system, you can increase, probably increase the capacity of the vape. Yes, there are, absolutely right, there are some legitimate ones out there, but the ones we've seen in his shop weren't that, weren't that at all.
Right, okay, now I understand, so, so, but I can understand therefore there might be, there's more grounds for confusion, isn't there? Okay, so, but, okay, so going back to my, my thread, I forget which, which, which one I've got to. I've got to the second or the third time you'd had these products seized. At some point, there's something, there's something going wrong, isn't there, in the way that you're? So after the third or the fourth time, what did you think? What do you think, what am I going to do? What was your plan?
The problem is I'm not buying the same product. I, I change a product which is, you can find in Cash and Carry.
Yeah, but just trying a different product in the hope that this one's legal isn't, isn't good enough, is it?
That's, that's our issue, we need to get advice, what to buy, what not to buy.
It's your responsibility though, isn't it? I mean, it's your, you know.
Correct, that's, that's the reason I'm not going to buy the same product, which is, they say to me, don't buy it, they take it.
If you're buying, just, just, just buying a different product in the hope that the different one isn't, is legal, isn't, isn't adequate. You can't say, I'm going to do something else and hope the thing I'm doing now is legal. That's, that's not a adequate response, having, having broken the law four times in a row.
What the seller's always telling us is legal, it's not like we buy illegal to put it back there. Because any of my product, nothing's been hidden and selling, it's all been displayed in shop. So I'm not buying it as illegal to, to sell it.
Okay, all right, just returning to these conditions you've offered. And this, this, this new CCTV system that is described, that has all these features, is that, is that already installed? Yes, it is, yeah, okay, okay. All right, thank you, that's enough.
Thank you, Constable McGowan.
Yeah, I think I'm struggling with what you were trying to say about things have changed now and you're on scene and, and there's going to be engagement, because it's not like there's been one agency involved in this. There's been three or four agencies several times. So I think, you know, there's been no responding to emails. And you said that he needed help and he's now got the help, but he had four agencies, three agencies there that he could have sought the help from, so, and didn't engage with any of them. It could have, you know, he's had emails, he could have replied and said, I need this help, but never. And it's just, alarm bells are going off, the, you know, agencies keep going in. And this, I don't know what was happening or why. I, I, it just doesn't, I'm just really struggling with why he didn't go out and seek help from those agencies. And, you know, somebody come in and took goods out of my shop, I'd be saying, why, what, what is it? Show me what it is that I've done wrong. And you're saying, but they didn't, you're making it sound like they came in, they took them out and walked out with them and they didn't even speak to you, is what you're trying to say. And I can't believe that that is the case. So if you could explain to me what happened on the day that they came in and what got said, that would help, thank you.
Thank you, what did they say?
Nothing is being taught, to be honest, they just took their product and say, we're going to let you know how many we took. That's all our information is, which is, most of the visits, it's all the amount is wrong as well. Like they, they have seventeen packs on the system they're showing, they had a fifteen, which is the left one, they got even forty, not fifteen.
Yeah, there are some anomalies.
Okay, and my other thing is, you've been on the training, you did the training eventually, but then continued. So even if it was alcohol, this, you know, you, you've had agencies going in there to say, you're doing things wrong, you've done the training, you should have been picking up the. Can I just clarify a question, are vapes mentioned on the training? Can I just ask that question?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
So, so vapes are mentioned, so there was another source there that you'd had the training, you'd got the details, I presume, because you'd done the training, you could have asked, what is it I'm doing wrong? You've done the training. And, you know, through the training, you'd have realised you're putting children at risk if you're selling the wrong thing. And, yeah, just why didn't you use those contacts?
But we have been in this place for how many years? Single child not been, near twenty years, single child not been said. And we had maybe more than fifty letters from the police, which is purchased test, we passed it. They haven't found one purchase has been done.
No underage sale. And just to add to that, he has another shop and he's just had a letter to say he's had another successful test purchase. There, there, there's not an issue with the children, there's not an issue. No evidence of issues can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Have you got these letters today then from the police?
I can confirm that there was a test purchase of his Blackstock Road shop about two months ago and that, that was a, a pass, a test purchase.
Okay.
There hasn't been one at the Jordan Thought Food and Wine from the police.
But we have in past and we have passed all of them. And I think you are aware of that, how many times people's been coming to try and to buy it and we reject them.
Tell them how, how the shop.
It's about twenty years and there is no single complaint, not even one letter to reject, say, you have served their customer.
I can confirm that in the twenty-fifth of January twenty eighteen, there was a, a pass test purchase. And that was the last one that I've got on our system for this shop.
Because we haven't had any more visitors, I think that's the reason you got the last one there. Because we had before that maybe more than twenty letters still inside the shop.
So when did you first get your solicitor on board? When did that start? When were you engaged?
I'll have to check my diary.
When I had a letter a little bit after that.
What, a letter from?
A letter from the, obviously, the.
That they'd done another seizure?
That's correct.
Was it the one in May or before?
Not before, not before, but I haven't worked on the case because I've been in court a lot. So I was instructed earlier, but that doesn't mean I became fully involved earlier.
Okay, I was just trying to work out how we had another failed test purchase in May despite, you knowing the review was coming, you having had the invite to the committee, yet officers have still gone in. Yet officers have still gone in and purchased illicit vapes and found the illegal handle on tobacco.
Said that.
Yeah, okay. How many personal licence holders have you got on staff?
It's just me.
Just you?
That's correct, yeah.
So the general manager's not a personal licence holder?
No, he's not.
Okay, but he's the one doing the majority of the alcohol sales?
Sorry.
Is he the one overseeing the majority of the alcohol sales?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I think you might get some advice afterwards that he might want to do the personal licence holder training.
I'm there as well, obviously, so.
Okay. How often are you on site? Yes, okay.
Mention earlier, they're all going to do further training.
Okay, now, how often are you on site? Because I know you've got a few other premises in that sort of area, haven't you? How often are you at this shop?
How often? I'm there every day.
Every day? But you've got your other businesses as well?
Use your mic, please.
They are possibly less than mile between them.
Okay. What proportion of your business are alcohol sales? Is it quite a big proportion?
It's reasonable, but it's all obviously coming through Nisa or the products, mainly we buy.
Percentage of it would be alcohol?
It's, it's mixed, obviously.
Would the business still be viable without an alcohol licence?
The business is, of course, it's going to be a big problem for me.
Okay, so when we say that it's not an issue because he's selling vapes, the alcohol licence is obviously what keeps the shop profitable, isn't it? Yeah.
The vape is not issue, the licence is issue for me.
Okay, so you said you stopped buying from Golden Goods because you knew it was not reputable wholesaler. How did you know that?
Because last time we purchased, obviously they seized it. That's a reason I can't buy the same product again, am I?
And it was just leftover stock from them in the May seizure then? Yeah. With the tobacco in the fridge, so you're saying it's because it was dry, so it needed to go in the fridge?
Correct, yeah.
Why is it sort of, because there's, from the pictures we've got, there's gaps on the shelf. So why would you not just slap it on the shelf? Why is it sort of tucked and hidden quite behind a lot of other products?
It's right on back of the shelf. It's not, we cannot display, obviously, it's not for sale.
Okay, have you not got a fridge in the back?
No.
How often would you keep the alcohol in the fridges, the tobacco in the fridges?
We don't keep, that's only time.
So the only time it's happened is when Trading Standards have come in and found it?
We never sold it and we don't sell this kind of, I have possibly about ten K a week I sell the normal cigarette. So what's the point to sell that? They can't check the sale of the tobacco, what we do, because we buy everything's purchases from Nisa. So at least about ten thousand pound a week, we sell just a normal tobacco.
Okey dokey, thank you. So I think we've heard that the safeguarding training also covers the vapes and in relation to children and young people. Obviously, we've also said that it's your responsibility to adhere to the law and to uphold the licensing objectives. Namely, the prevention of crime and disorder and the protection of children from harm. You have had training on that, yet you've repeatedly been found not to adhere to the licensing objectives. How has that happened?
Well, it's, sorry, I don't, I don't get it. Sorry about you.
Don't understand the question.
Well, you've had the training that covers how you adhere to the licensing objectives, your duty as a responsible operator of an alcohol licensed premises. You've had the training, you've had the information sent through. How are we still seeing these failures?
Because, as I said, it's, I don't think this is illegal things I'm doing it, because I bring all the product is legal. I'm not buying from places like, I cannot provide the invoice.
So you know, after sort of the police or safeguarding or licensing or Trading Standards have been out. And whether you've had an email or not, I think we've seen the ones from the police certainly that you have had. Would you not think to get in touch with them and be like, what can I do? Like, this has happened four times now. How can I not keep having you come in my shop and seizing products? Why would you not do that?
I'm not that good with reading and writing, to be honest with you, with the emails. They know, they know better than me because even last time I told them, say I've got a problem. Even they mention it, say you have to hire somebody to deal with it.
Okay, but they've spoken to you verbally as well, so if they sort of speak to you, go, you know, we found these vapes, they're illegal. I'm going to take them away, you'll get a notice through. If you're then still struggling to identify what's illegal or not, would you not ask them for help?
I would, obviously, I can, I, the things, the vape has been taken off me. So I don't know where to, I can't get it back or not.
Yeah, okay. Would you have a look on Google, sort of how to identify an illegal vape?
Normally, we identify if it's fake or anything, obviously, it's got a barcode every single vape you buy. If it's like not genuine vape, it tell you fake and stuff like that.
Okay, would you know how to identify an illegal one?
Illegals, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know how to identify, to be honest.
Okay, because I.
We can identify it's fake or not fake.
Okay, so we've heard about the two mil tank size, just literally a quick slap into Google, how to identify illegal vapes UK? Because I'm not an expert either. It's given you a whole list of things to look for. These guys are obviously your source of knowledge on that, that you could have gone to and could to in the future, should you need to. But it is your responsibility to be doing that. It's not for them to come to you and offer you all the information in the world. If you don't know, you have to go and find that out.
That's right. At least they should give us advice when they seize the product. So I'm not saying I haven't done the mistake. I have done the mistake. And they should give me advice before they leave the premise. They leave the letter, will send me a letter for what to do next.
And it's your position that you've not had that advice at the time?
That's correct.
All these guys have been in your shop, they've just come in, taken the stuff and gone.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
So when the police came in and you discussed going on the action plan with the police and safeguarding, they just said, here's an action plan, you signed it and they left. There was no discussion?
I didn't involve the vapes, did I?
It's all, all about safeguarding.
It's not just about vapes, just because he's not got a licence that authorises the sale of illegal vapes or legal vapes. You're still a responsible operator, you have a duty to adhere to these licensing objectives, which by doing that, you're not. So when they're coming in and explaining why you're not adhering to those, you've had that advice. A lot, I would suggest. Thank you, don't thank you, Chair.
Okay, so. Okay, that's the end of questions from this side. I am going to offer the opportunity to our interested parties and responsible authority. Again, only questions, please, if you have any questions of the applicants, then we'll give an opportunity to sum up. So Standards first, if you want to ask any questions.
Yeah, I've just got one. I want, I think we've, we've gone to, to great length over the, the vapes. But the, the illicit tobacco in the fridge, I know we're disputing how many packs were there, but I've just worked it out. It's about three quarters of a kilogram was found in there. Why would you have that?
Is it, is it not possible to people go to, people go abroad, bring some tobacco for themselves?
It's perfectly possible, but why would you want three quarters of a kilogram of tobacco for your own personal use on your premises? In a fridge, in, in your shop? You've got a home and you could keep it there?
Of course we can keep him in a home, but who knows that he's not been trying to pass it to somebody's part of family?
But also knowing full well that this was found after this review's gone in. You know you're subject to a licence review, why would, why would you think I'm going to keep illegal tobacco in a fridge on my own premises? And, yeah, why, why would you do that?
Why would you do that? Because it's not for sale, so obviously not being displayed. Because it's not, not been for sale, that's why it's been hidden, that's why it's not, not even hidden, obviously, it's just been in a fridge.
I mean, I, I'll be honest, I've been working illicit tobacco a long time and keeping it in a fridge to keep it. Why, it's a new one for me and the, the, the committee can draw their own conclusions to that. But as I said, just because you were subject to this review, you knew this review was going to happen. Why would you keep illicit tobacco in a fridge?
Do you reckon somebody's selling tobacco having a fifteen pack in the shop? If somebody's selling?
Well, it's more than personal use, isn't it?
It's not, it's not more?
Well, I think, we'll, we'll, we'll leave it at that. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, any more questions from yourself, Standards? No? Okay, Julie, you have any questions?
Yes, please, Chair. It's a question for Mr Mohammed. There's been some suggestion about the quality of the training around vapes and other age restricted products. So, Mr Mohammed, could you confirm that you attended the training in July twenty twenty three? Do you remember that?
Of course I remember, yes.
Okay, thank you. So do you remember the presentation by, by Trading Standards? The presenter was Greg Ward, he's a Trading Standards Enforcement Officer, or was at the time. And he spent about an hour talking about the risks of age restricted products, including the white van man. Do you remember he talked about that? Be careful of the white van man, be careful of illegal vapes. Tobacco knives, bladed articles, the whole, which aren't necessarily licensed, but can be in the environment at your shop if you're not careful. Do you, just, the question is, do you remember that?
I do remember, yes.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Just one question for Mr Mohammed. Did you ever consider not selling disposable vapes? So that you, if you weren't sure about what is, what is legal, what is not legal, what was safe, what was not safe. Was there ever consideration to just think, well, I won't sell those because I can't work out what's right and what's not? And to save repeatedly being confiscated?
It's no choice from now on in first place because it's all been banned. So the six hundred and everything else has been banned. So nobody's had a choice to sell it anymore anyway. But it's obviously from now on, after the ban. Before that, it was, most of them is illegal. As I said, you got fifteen thousand, you got twenty thousand, you got all type. Last time they took my cigarette nicotine free. Nicotine free, you can buy one litre liquid without any problem. So the cigarette they took it from me, they all illegal.
My question is, did, did you ever have a consideration to just not sell them because you couldn't work out what was right and what wasn't? So did you ever think, maybe I shouldn't just sell them in my shop?
I do think, of course I do think now, it's, it's.
Now, but did you, was that ever an option for you to, or you always? You know, if, if I kept buying products that kept getting seized by Trading Standards because they were illicit and they weren't correct. And I think, oh, I, I don't know how to identify a valid product from an invalid product. I would just not buy it at all and then I'm not getting myself into any bother. So my question was, why did you not just stop selling them if you couldn't work it out?
The ones they have took it, even they say it's illegal, it's not because no nicotine, there is no, zero nicotine there.
I mean, I'm not Trading Standards Officer, so I don't want to argue about what they took and what they didn't take.
But I have stopped, I have stopped and the ones I bring is zero nicotine, which is you can buy wherever you want to buy it. It's, it's, it's not illegal. They took it, they, they left the message for the staff, say, it's a packaging is wrong, something like that, which is not wrong. Everything is legal.
I do have one other question then. So obviously, me and yourself, we know each other quite well because we've, we've had a lot of dealings over three years. You've got my emails, you've got my phone number, we've conversed on WhatsApp and we've conversed over the phone and in person via email. Do you remember all of the visits that I've made and we, we were with you for some significant time? You know, we spent probably over an hour at each visit that we've done, going through everything. So I verbally went through everything with you. Do you, do you remember me doing that with you?
I do remember, I do remember and we did listen, whatever you asked me and we done everything as what, what we've been asked.
Do you remember seeing any of the emails that I sent? Do you remember responding to them?
It was the last time we knew been, obviously, yeah.
So the emails that I sent you in twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three and at the beginning of twenty twenty four, you remember receiving those?
Twenty four, no.
I sent you the action plan discharge letter. It was right at the beginning of January.
I haven't seen twenty four, but the previous ones before the, and if you remember, you are sending it to Hemmen because my emails wasn't.
All of the emails have gone to both of yourself and Hemmen because you asked me to do that because he was your manager.
Opened.
So at the time of our visits, Hemmen was your main manager and you were working majority out of your Grealish shop. That's correct. So Hemmen was your main manager, which is why you asked me to copy him in.
That's right, yeah.
At the end of all of my emails, when I've sent emails to yourself, specifically the one after the visit in August of twenty, two thousand and twenty two. And the visit when we did the action plan on the seventeenth of February twenty twenty three. I've put at the bottom of both of those emails that if you've got any questions, any queries, if you're concerned or you don't understand what we're asking of you, that you must get in touch. And we've not had you get in touch at any point. So my, my question really is, did you understand what we were asking of you? Did you understand all the advice that was given verbally and in the emails?
We understand the emails, advice, all being considered, everything has been, what, you asked me for the training, you asked me for the sign of posters, all this, everything has been done. You asked me for the reject file, everything is what you asked me, everything's been done.
And do you remember that during the verbal visits, that I said, if there's absolutely anything, you contact any of us at any time and we'll help? And even if it's not my area, that I would help direct you into the right areas? Do you remember me saying that verbally to you at our meetings?
I don't, I can't say I remember, to be honest, I don't.
That's everything from me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of all the questions and the representations. We're at the final stage and I'm going to give an opportunity for everyone to briefly just sum up their presentations this morning. So again, Trading Standards first, just, if you want to just sum up very briefly, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think we've talked at length over the issue around illegal vapes in the shop and also illegal cigarettes. Just on the initial review application. This was obviously before the latest development with the illegal tobacco in the fridge was found. So that's why I am recommending that you strongly consider the revoking the premises licence. But also I thought about the, I think right at the very start, Chair, you made the point about ignorance and, and the law and saying, you know, about advice and stuff like that. We, we always advise verbally and I, I, I do, in the shop, there are, there is legitimate product in there. We will have picked up a legitimate vape from behind the counter and explained, this is, you're fine buying these, for example, you know. Example of a legitimate product in that shop, so you should be well aware of what, what the law requires. And this legislation was written in twenty sixteen, it's not a new piece of, new piece of, of legislation at all. And as, as my colleague Catherine did make, make the point, if, if I was running a shop and I'm not sure about a product, then I just wouldn't go there, I wouldn't buy it. I mean, if I'm, you know, he doesn't have to sell vapes if he doesn't, if you're not sure of something, then why, why sell it? And just one final point I didn't, I didn't cover initially is, it's important that in, in Trading Standards, we have a consumer protection element to protect the public. We also have a, a remit to protect the business, legitimate businesses in a, in a level playing field. And we do get, continually get complaints from legitimate retailers about, you know, I, I sell legitimate products, I don't sell illegal products. What are you doing about this shop, that shop and the other one? You know, they're putting me out of business, I can't trade because they're getting an unfair advantage. So it's, it, it really is an important point to stress that, that, you know, we, we all have a duty to look after those traders that do want to comply with, comply with the law. So that, that's it, thanks. I'm, nothing else to add.
Thank you. Julie?
Thanks, Chair. The city's licence.
Thank you, Chair. The city's licensing policy requires licensees to operate responsibly and provide a safe, family-friendly environment. And that means more than preventing underage sales. Any licensed premises of any type that was permitting illegal activity would be an unsuitable environment for children and young people for the reasons that we've discussed at this hearing. Children rightly should be able to go out, do their shopping, learn to socialise in a safe environment. And this premises does not comply with the licensing policy or uphold the objectives of the Licensing Act. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Julie. Catherine?
Thank you. The sale of illegal vapes and illicit tobacco is a severe problem that is affecting the entire country. It's not just this particular shop or this area or Sheffield. It, it's, it's a, it's a national problem. I would like you to reread again DC Jonathan Keenan's report that he made, which sort of goes into a bit more detail from a policing perspective, that he can offer insight into how, how things are in the country in relation to illicit products. But they are strongly linked to serious and organised crime. And those crime gangs are operating locally, nationally and internationally. The premises, if they're purchasing these illicit products from non-bonified manufacturers, then they are allowing these gangs to profit from those sales to these shops. And the sales of that, of the, and the profits from those sales is also not going through the correct channels for VAT purposes. So you've got issues of them defrauding the VAT for the government. We don't know what's in the products. So again, you're, you're putting, you're allowing your business to be allowed as an outlet for these products to be sold into your communities. You know, it, it does also, it outlines the links between the criminal gangs, the money laundering, the trafficking and the dangers and risks of those gangs to children. Sorry, bear with me a second. Oh, I would suggest that by allowing Mr Mohammed to continue having his alcohol sales at the premise, is actually allowing him to create profit for his business to then be able to buy illicit products and then to have those sold in his shops. So it, it is the, South Yorkshire Police would like you to consider the revocation of the licence. We don't feel that Mr Mohammed is the correct person for this particular shop in this community. He doesn't engage with us, even when he has engaged his solicitor. He still hasn't responded to the emails from myself or Julie and provided the extra information that we did ask for. And I would have a concern that once he stops engaging the services of his solicitor, whether he would continue on the good path that she's saying that he will under her because she's only involved while ever he's paying her. So I would have some concerns that once that relationship ends, that we might be back at a similar situation with Mr Mohammed again. That's everything from me, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And finally, I'll go back to the applicant for summing up, please.
Yeah, I think, I think really I've said all I've got to say about the premises licence and the fact that removing it isn't going to solve the problem. What will solve the problem is putting conditions on the licence, robust conditions to include the vape alcohol policy, et cetera, and putting together a full due diligence package, which I have given you a sample of today. Have to add, there's, there's been much said about children and the safety of children and of course, we all want children to be safe. But this premises hasn't sold to underage. This, this has been harped on about and harped on about. The premises has not sold to underage. It's not about underage sales here. It's about the legality or illegality of, of the vapes that are being purchased. On that note, I urge you to consider the remedial action taken to ensure the licensing objectives will be upheld. The extra training that the DPS and the staff are going to undertake under my guidance. And your decision, it should be justified as being appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives in proportion to what it's intended to achieve. So determination of whether an action or step is appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives requires an assessment of what action or step would be suitable to achieve that end. You can modify the licence, you can add conditions, you could even suspend for a short period of time while you ensure that my client and his staff do undergo the training. But whatever decision you make, it's always important under, in Statutory Guidance 1123, that any detrimental final, final impact may result from a licensing authority's decision is appropriate in proportion to the promotion of the licensing objectives. So basically, in a nutshell, this is about the vapes today, that's why we're here. What can we do to deal with the vapes? We can put conditions on the licence, form part of the premises licence, which are then enforceable by the authorities. The licence itself at the moment, the conditions are useless, as they are. They do not make any sense. They're not relevant, they can't be enforced. My client has engaged me to help him going forward and I understand, I understand what the police are saying about, I'm only going to be helping when I get paid. I don't actually work like that. I'm a sole practitioner. I'm not like pay me by the hour, this is what I do. I do a job and I do an ongoing job if the client wants me to, to help them through this. I mean, obviously, he's come to me because he's now like, oh my God, what do I do? I need help. And I, I intend to help him. So I'm not a kind of pay by the hour person. I do help, I do the full package. So I'd urge you not to revoke the licence. If you consider suspending it for a short period of time whilst everything is in place, then so be it. But I would ask you not to revoke it. It doesn't address the concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thanks everyone for, for all the presentations and questions and answers. We now obviously, we're moving to a private session where we deliberate and discuss and decide what the next steps we think should be or would be. And before that, I'll ask our licence officer to give us what options we've got available for this morning.
Thank you, Chair. The options open to the committee are to A, modify the conditions of the licence, B, exclude the licence of activity from the scope of the licence, C, remove the designated premises supervisor, D, suspend the licence for a period not exceeding three months, E, revoke the licence, or F, reject the application for review.
Okay, thank you. Right, so now we're going to ask all yourselves to leave the, the room and the licence officer so we can have a private discussion and deliberate. Thank you. Okay, thanks everyone again. We have deliberated and we've come to a decision. Mr Mohammed, just say that the committee has come to the conclusion, given your past record, we're not satisfied that any conditions going forward under your licence would be complied with. You've had numerous opportunities to engage and take up training and, and you've actually failed to, to engage and take up those opportunities. This is repeatedly, this actually, this action repeatedly undermines the prevention of crime and disorder objective. And we therefore have decided to revoke your licence. Thank you. So.
Thank you, Chair. So just to confirm, as you probably already know, you've got the right of appeal against that decision. So following the hearing today, you'll be sent a notice from the Licensing Service outlining a summary of all the evidence before the committee today, how they came to that decision and the reasons for it. So you can use that notice if you want to appeal to the Magistrates Court, which is within 21 days. Essentially, what the magistrates do is sit exactly as members have done today, look at all the evidence before them at that time and come to a decision as to whether their decision was right or not. Okay, but if you need any guidance on next steps and stuff, just email the Licensing Service, they'll be able to help. All right, well, thank you everyone for your time today. It's much appreciated.
Thanks again, everyone. Thank you.